Today's meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item after the person that we're waiting for arrives at the meeting for the quorum. Okay, we are going to begin with the financial report presentation. Thank you.
This is Anderson with staff. Financial reports, since that doesn't take any official approval either. The financial report put in your agenda packet, we're at 9:30 2017, so that's 25% of the year. As you can see, looking down through the funds, we are at 27% of expenses at this time of the year, and we are at 21% of revenues. So, pretty much right where we're supposed to be at 25% of the year as some of the expenses come out at the beginning of the year for insurance and things like that, and some of the revenues are just waiting on some property sales to be finalized. So, we are right about where we should be at this point of the year.
Are there any questions? Okay. Thanks. We are just waiting for a quorum. Thank you.
This is Schrader with staff. So, there are... Under Section E, Plans and Studies on the Agenda, items one through four, there are four different TIF amendments. The first one is an amendment to the San Marnon Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan and TIF District to reduce the area included therein. And then the second one is an amendment to the San Marnon Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan and TIF District to enlarge the area included therein and make other updates. So, let me turn to it. There is a map in your packet that shows the areas being removed and the areas being put back in, which are primarily identical. There is... The only difference is on the far east end, which is actually to correct an error in the previous amendment to the San Marnon TIF District where a parcel was split. But, the end result of the amendments will not significantly change the existing boundary other than that one parcel I noted. The areas being removed and then put back into the TIF are undeveloped areas that are not likely to be developed before their 20-year sunset, and the amendment will establish a new 20-year sunset for these areas. Once removed from the existing TIF, any increment will be released from the TIF, and once put back in, the current values will become the new frozen base that is released to all taxing entities, including the City of Waterloo's general fund. Only future increment from future development of these areas would be captured by the TIF. This would appear to be the best model to accomplish economic development of this area, and the amendment will also update projects and project budgets to be included in the plan. And I'll go directly into the other ones as well, and then we can have a discussion on all of the TIF amendments. But, item three on the agenda, under the Plans and Studies, is a request by the City of Waterloo for an amendment to the Northeast Industrial Area Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan and TIF District to reduce the area included therein. And then number four, request by the City of Waterloo for an amendment to the Northeast Industrial Area Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan and TIF District to enlarge the area included therein. So, similar to the San Marnon amendments, the two amendments for the Northeast will do this similar thing. With this one, if you look at the maps, the areas are identical. The areas being removed are identical to the areas being put back in. And the areas being removed and put back in are undeveloped areas that are not likely to develop before their 20-year sunset, and the amendment will establish a new 20-year sunset. And then we'll also update projects and project budgets to be included in the plan. Are there any questions on any of the TIF amendments? So, this is also similar to what we did approximately a year ago for the San... or San Martin, the Martin Road TIF District, where we released some area from the TIF and then put it back into the TIF District. Really, the only net change is essentially extending the date of sunset.
Is anyone here for the Bluff Street Right-A-Way vacate? Okay. We'll wait for Bob then. He is on his way, they said. The meeting is over.
There he is.
Okay. I'm Commissioner Eric Do Not, and I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is the meeting... This is the meeting for the Planning and Zoning Commission for November the 14th of 2017, and the time is 4:35 PM. And I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order, as I've said. The first item is the approval of agenda. Do we have a motion on the floor to approve the agenda?
I would move to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Bunchen to approve the agenda as presented, and we have a second from Commissioner Tyson to do so. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, those voting in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone voting against? Hearing none, the... The motion has passed. And... The item was approved, sorry. The next item is the approval of minutes. We're going to give a few moments for people to look over the minutes. Any questions on the minutes? Any comments or corrections? Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Tyson. We have a second.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Wilber. Is there any discussion? Those voting in favor to approve the minutes?
Aye.
Those voting against? Hearing none, the motion passed and the minutes are approved as presented. The third item, we already covered earlier, and that was the financial report for September 2017. We've already passed through the oral presentations. The first item for agenda... The first item for the agenda items, we have... We have hearings and rezone and site plan amendments. The time is 4:38, and a hearing is scheduled at this time. The request is by Stephen Hackbarth to rezone approximately 1.05 acres from R3 multiple residence district to C1 CZ conditional zoning district for the purposes of establishing an antique store and apartment in the former church building located at 801 Wellington Street on pages 12 to 22 in your packet. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter and aerial photos were mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on October 31st, 2017." Could we have a motion to receive and place this notice on file?
I move to receive this item on file.
We have a motion by Commissioner Castle. And do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Bunchen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion's carried. For those of you in the audience who wish to speak for or against this request, we ask that you please come to the microphone and identify yourself by your name and address. The members of the commission should also identify themselves before speaking into the microphone. Is there anyone from the audience with a presentation? Sorry. First, we have a staff report before audience presentation.
This is Andero with staff. This is a request for the property at 801 Wellington Street to rezone from R3 to C1 CZ conditional zoning district. The applicant is Stephen Hackbarth. They wish to rezone the property for purpose of establishing an antique store and one apartment in the former church building. Request could have a negative impact on the surrounding neighborhood or land use as rezoning the land to commercial use would be allowing the commercial district to encroach into a predominantly residentially zoned neighborhood. However, if proper conditions are placed on the request, those conditions could potentially mitigate the impacts of the commercial use on the budding residential neighborhood and allow for the reuse of what would otherwise be a vacant church building. The area is served by Wellington Street and West Sixth Street, which are local streets. There's also an alley access point to the property to the northeast from West Sixth Street. Commercial uses could potentially have a negative impact on traffic conditions on the residential street. However, the proposed use as an antique shop would appear to be a low-traffic generation use. Site is zone R3 and has been zoned as such since 1969 since the adoption of the ordinance. To the north is single-family and two-family residence zoned R3. South is single-family residence zoned R3. East is single-family and two-family residences zoned R3. West is existing commercial and residential development zone C2 commercial district. No buffers would be required as a part of the rezoning request. However, the parking of vehicles next to the residential uses to the southeast of the property could negatively impact those properties. Staff believes that the property should be buffered along the southeasterly line of the parking lot with a buffer not less than six feet in height. The buffer could be a weather-resistant wood fence. Would it appear to be adequate? They are wishing to establish an antique store and one apartment in the former church building at 801 Wellington Street. An antique store is permitted in the C1 neighborhood commercial district. However, staff is proposing conditional zoning due to the close proximity of residents and the impact commercial uses could have on those residences. As noted, staff recommends that there be a buffer no less than six feet on the southeast property line along 817 Wellington Street to mitigate the commercial use on the property. An antique store would be considered a retail use, and this building is between 5,000 and 50,000 square feet, which requires one parking stall for every 250 feet of floor, which would require 21 parking stalls. Residential dwelling requires two parking stalls. Therefore, it would appear that 23 stalls are needed for the development. By looking at an aerial photo of the site, staff estimates there are about 30 parking stalls on the site, which is in excess of seven. Therefore, appears all parking requirements are being met. The applicant is proposing to set an antique wagon on the vacant lot adjacent to West Fifth Street and affix a four-by-eight, 32-square foot sign to it to advertise the business. The C1 regs allow for one freestanding post-pull or monument sign, shall not exceed 45 square feet in height, and not have a surface area greater than 80 square feet on one side. At the technical review committee, fire indicated there could be issues with renovating this building, noting that potentially there is a need for a sprinkler system and fire alarm system, and recommended that the request be tabled until those details can be discussed. Building inspections department also indicated that certified architectural plans will need to be submitted for the renovation for building code review. However, staff is recommending approval to rezone 1.05 acres from R3 to C1 CZ as the request would not appear to have negative impact on the area, would not appear to have negative impact on pedestrian traffic conditions within the surrounding area, and the request is in conformance with the future land use map and comp plan for this area, which designated as mixed residential, professional office, and neighborhood commercial with the following conditions, that there would be a solid six-foot-tall fence along the southeasterly property line of the parking lot to screen it from the adjacent residential use located at 817 Wellington Street, that the use be limited to an antique shop with one apartment, three, that there is no outside storage allowed on the premises, and four, that the regulations of the C1 sign regulations in the C1 district be met.
Does the... Do any of the commissioners have any questions for staff?
This is Bunchen, and I do. We're basically voting to just simply rezone this at this time, not... Because my concern is the fire thing with the sprinkler system and all that. So, at this point, we're just... We're not saying okay for renovations and all that. We're just saying for the rezoning, is that correct?
Right, just rezoning the property, the land.
Yeah, okay.
And they'll still be required to meet all fire code, building code requirements for that type of building.
And then, this might be not a good question, but I'm just going to ask... This is Bunchen again. The fact that we're saying it needs to be limited to an antique shop and an apartment, what's to prevent them from changing that down the road? They'd have to come before us again and...
Correct, the conditional zoning is site plan and use-specific, so they'd have to come back to the planning commission, and notice would be sent to the neighbors if there was a change to some other type of store or something like that.
Thank you.
I had a question. This is Commissioner Do Not. I had a question about the fire and building inspections concerns. Now, when this item comes back for, say, a site plan amendment or some other action on this item, that it's not just the rezone? Are those items considered at that time then?
Actually, the rezone is approving the site plan and the use, so it would not come back for a site plan amendment.
Okay. Thank you. The other part of my question was, do we need to consider the questions from Commissioner Bunchen and myself about the concerns with the fire or building inspections?
I mean, the permit review process is an entirely separate process. That's handled by the building inspections department.
So, that's separate from this commission?
Correct.
Okay. Do any other commissioners have any questions? Okay. Does anybody have... Does anyone from the public or the audience have any questions or presentations on this item? Or against? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a motion to close the public hearing.
So, moved. This is Commissioner Virginia Wilber.
I'll second that.
Okay. The meeting is closed. I mean, the... Sorry. The... We need to call for a vote to close the hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Okay. The meeting... The hearing is closed, sorry. Discussion amongst commissioners.
I just have, I guess, one question, and maybe it should have been for the staff now that I think about it. But, my concern is the size of this building and that they're requesting only... We're specifying only one apartment. What happens if it comes back and they do their plans and find out it could be an antique and they could fit five apartments? Would they have to come back to have it reviewed again?
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve? Do we have a motion to approve the item as presented?
This is Castle, and I move that we approve based on the staff recommendation to rezone the 1.05 acres of land from R3 to C1 CZ conditional zoning district with the following conditions, that there be a solid six-foot-tall fence along the southeasterly line of the parking lot to screen it from the adjacent residential use located on 817 Wellington Street, that the use be limited to an antique shop with one apartment, that there is no outside storage allowed on the premises, and that the sign regulations of C1 commercial district be required for the site.
The motion was done by Commissioner Castle. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, second by Bunchen. Do we have any additional discussion from the commission? Hearing none, is those voting in favor of the item?
Aye.
Anyone voting against? Okay. The motion's passed. Okay. The second... The second item... Sorry. The second item on the agenda today is the request by LNB... Sorry. By L and BB... LC... By L and BB L...
LLC.
LLC, sorry. For a site plan amendment to the R3 NRP Planned Residence District to allow for construction of six single-family homes located southeast of 2950 Southland Drive on pages 23 to 31 in your packet. At this time, should... At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, site plan, and aerial photos were mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on October the 31st, 2017." Could we have a motion? And could we have a motion to receive and replace... To receive and place this motion on... This notice on file?
I so move.
Okay. Moved by Bunchen and seconded by...
Seconded by Tyson.
By Tyson. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. This is received and placed on file. For anyone in the audience who wish to speak for or against this item, we ask that you come to the microphone and identify yourself by your name and address. The members of the commission should also identify themselves before speaking into the microphone. Is there... Sorry. First, we'll have the staff report before the audience presentations.
Yeah, this is Hyburger with staff. I had a citizen call, and they just wanted me to hand out these photos. They're within Charm Drive area, and I was asked to bring these. This was concerning development in the exact same area in Southland to the north, and I just wanted to make sure that everybody was able to see these photos. For the site we're looking at, to the south of Charm Drive and to the west, these photos were taken to the north and the east of Charm Drive. So, I just wanted to bring these photos. Okay, this is Hyburger with staff for the staff report. Request for a site plan amendment to the R3 RP Planned Multiple Residence District. Request for a site plan amendment to the R3 RP planned multiple residence district to allow for the development of six residential lots for single family homes. The site was previously approved for two duplexes. The site plan amendment would increase the number of approved residential lots from two to six. And increases the number of approved residential units from four to six. And is located southeast of 2950 Southland Drive. The applicant is L and BB LLC, 825 Jefferson Street, Waterloo. The applicant is requesting to allow for the development of six single family homes just south of Charm Drive and southeast of 2950 Southland Drive. The request for the site plan amendment would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area, would appear that the proposed residential uses would blend in well with the surrounding neighborhood, which consists of commercial twin homes and single family homes. The proposed site plan amendment would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding traffic conditions in the area, the proposed development would be served by Southland and Charm Drive, which are classified as local streets and Highway 63, which is classified as a principal arterial. The Sargent Road Recreational Trail runs along the northeast side of Highway 63, which would be northwest of the proposed site plan amendment area. The area in question was rezoned from A1 Agricultural District to R3 RP Planned Residence District on November 24th, 1975. The surrounding land uses and their designations are as follows, to the north is vacant land zoned R3 RP Planned Residence District. To the south, multifamily zoned R3 RP Planned Residence District. To the east, single family homes on R3 RP Planned Residence District. And to the west, professional offices and a commercial use zone R3 RP Planned Residence District. The site plan amendment request would appear to have an impact on drainage in the hour, in the area. However, the site plan amendment does denote a 28,010 square foot stormwater detention area of 50 feet drainage easement on the southwest portion of the property and a 50 foot drainage easement to the southeastern portion of the property. The proposed site plan amendment area is not located in a special flood hazard area as indicated by the Federal Insurance Administration's Flood Insurance Rate Map Panel dated July 18th, 2011. Prescotts Creek is located 400 feet north of the site plan amendment area. There are no nearby schools in the vicinity. There is a 12 inch sewer line, 12 inch water line and 15 inch storm sewer that is located within Charm Drive to the north of the proposed residential development. There is a 10 foot utility easement on the northern and western edge of the property. The project area currently has storm sewer, water and sanitary sewer services available in the project area. The applicant is requesting to construct six homes along the south side of Charm Drives. The R3 RP Planned Residence District is site plan specific and changes to the site plan must be approved through the major site plan amendment process. The size of the lots ranging size from 10,727 square feet to 16,137 square feet with an average lot size of 12,654 square feet. Each property shows a 20 foot setback from the front and 20 or more for the rear property lines and five feet on the sides. The setbacks all meet the minimum requirements for the R3 RP Planned Residence District. The area is owned R3 RP Planned Residence District, which is intended and designed to provide for flexibility and diversification of land uses. Staff believes that the new residential development will be compatible with and have a positive impact on the surrounding neighborhood. A subsequent plat will be forthcoming for the proposed development of the site. The technical review committee did not have any concerns requiring the proposed request, but wanted to note that the existing 12 inch sanitary sewer is very deep and has a high water table, which could impact its constructability. Therefore, staff recommends that the request for the site plan amendment in the R3 RP Planned Residence District be approved for the following reasons. The proposed use would appear to have a positive impact in the area by bringing additional housing on vacant land within the residential area. The proposed use has a drainage design to properly direct stormwater from development through the plating process. The proposed use would not appear to have a negative impact on the area and be compatible to existing development in the area with lots comparable in size to the surrounding development. Proposed development is within the density requirement set forth within the zoning ordinance for this particular zoning district. Proposed use would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic and pedestrian conditions in the area as the lot sits upon previously built local roads. And subject to the following conditions, that the final site plan meets all municipal city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, drainage, et cetera. And that is Hyburger with the staff report.
Do we have any questions from commissioners for the staff?
These photos, are they from, if you're looking at the map, then are they, you said they're towards the top?
Yeah, they're towards the north.
What would be that lot where it says? Is it that, the very top lot, that lot, lot five where it says existing tree, or is that where those are?
Yeah, those are, these, these pictures were, were essentially handed out when the northern part was developed, so this is to the north and then to, to the, to the east.
So they're just off the map?
Yeah, they're just off the map.
Okay. And then I noticed, sorry, this is Commissioner Wilber, I noticed in the, the tech notes, you had mentioned that neighbors had concerns about the drainage in the area as well. Can you elaborate on those a little bit, or is that kind of addressed with the photos?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's been, I've received a couple of calls from some concerns residents about drainage issues within the area. And I also did the staff report for the area to the north, you know, where those pictures were taken. So there, there are, you know, some drainage issues or concerns with, within the area, but also, you know, want to note the, the detention basin that they have included in this, and there's already other drainage easements that were preexisting that are still within, you know, on the site plan amendment.
So this is Butch. This is something from the technical, technical review committee as well. When they were talking about the, the 12 inch sanitary sewer, very deep, has a high water table which could impact its constructability. Is that a problem?
It, it wasn't really noted as, as a problem. It was just, basically, engineering staff with the city just wanted to, to note that. Because basically, the people were, are already tapping into it for the development to the, the north, which was previously approved.
Okay.
So it's, it's just kind of a, yeah, it's basically, there'll be increased costs is, is basically what.
Okay, thank you, just didn't understand that.
Sure.
Do you have any other questions from the commission? Okay, do we have any, do we have any presentation from the audience members or from the general public? From those, for those speaking for or against this item? Okay. Please state your name and your address.
Mary Ann Mum, 4842 Fostoria Drive. And I have a couple of questions, concerns. And my first concern is about the drainage because the two existing. What are they called? Well, two existing draining areas, the storm sewers on Fostoria drain by my property. And they go and connect with the two existing that were pointed out. So I'm, my first question is how deep is the detention pond going to be? I couldn't quite get that from the, the drawings, and so I assume that you've calculated that to be adequate to, you know, stop the flow of water long enough for it to be absorbed. I don't know the pictures that are, are going around, but the water drains along by my property relatively well, and I'm afraid that there'll be water coming from the new development that will back up and back towards my house. And I haven't had water in my basement since I moved there in 2000, except for 2008 when my sump pump didn't kick in. So I don't want that to happen again, I don't want water in the basement. So that's my first concern. My second is more of a question. In your staff report, you're saying the average lot size within the 250 foot buffer is going to be 17,000. Oh, is, 17,968 square feet. And the average lot size for the six proposed residential lots is 12,654. That's appreciably smaller. And if it's, if the lot size is appreciably smaller, is the house size going to be appreciably smaller for the neighborhood? And in the staff recommendation, it says the proposed use would not appear to have a negative impact on the area and be compatible to existing development in the area with lots comparable in size to the surrounding development. I'm questioning the comparable size going from 17,000 to 12,000. So my concern is the drainage and my question is about the lot size.
Okay, I think I may have the applicant address the drainage.
Okay, is the applicant in the audience?
Wanda Lupkus with VJ Engineering, representing the owner. Let's go back a little bit in time, I think it was 1975, this was rezoned to the residential use. Back in, must have been in the late eighties. It would appear there was a dispute between some of the early lot purchasers and the Southland Park developers. So Mike Ryan contacted the DNR in 1989 and asked for a clarification from the DNR on what they had approved as far as Southland Park. And it's not a very lengthy document, but I'll just read a few highlights. Dear Mr. Ryan enclosed as an affidavit related to Southland Park in your request of September 13th, 1989. The affidavit basically establishes that the grading for stage one and stage two was accomplished in accordance with the approved plans and that in the eyes of the department. And that's the Iowa Department of Natural Resources. In the eyes of the department, the responsibility for complying with floodproofing requirements of Council Order 7681, and that's actually the Council of Natural Resources, they changed names in there somewhere too. Rest with the respective property owners at the time the building was constructed and not necessarily with Southland Park. So that's where this affidavit comes from. So if we look at the content of that 1989 affidavit, it was from Jack Reeson, who worked for the DNR at that time. He's, I depose and say that I am presently the supervisor of the floodplain section of the Iowa Department of Natural Resources, blah, blah, blah. Then it talks about the Natural Resources Council Order 76-81 authorized Southland Park, Inc. to construct, maintain and operate a residential and commercial development on the floodplain of Prescotts Creek in Section 78813, blah, blah, blah. That the authority granted and conditions contained in Council Order 7681 attached to the land and transferred to the successors and interest unless otherwise rescinded or altered by the Department of Natural Resources. So basically, it goes through and spells out a lot of different criteria that have to be met for people to build houses out there. So the drainage easements and stuff that are already in place, like the, well, it's, it's a 50 foot easement overall, but it's 25 on this lot and 25 on the lots behind. We're increasing that by five feet, so basically increasing the capacity by 10% there. Also, in 1989, there was no requirement for any detention or water quality. And we're providing both of these so that any rainfall that falls on this particular development on these two lots, which will eventually become six, is collected and up to 100 year storm is going to be contained within that drainage basin at the back of the lots. And then it'll be released at a slower rate. So because the drainage area that goes behind Fostoria and, and back and out towards Prescott Creek is rather large. You're not going to notice that it's going to drop the flood elevation, but it's not going to make it any worse. With that, I would entertain any questions.
Is there any questions from the commission, from the commission for the applicant?
This is Schrader with staff, the original resident kind of had a two-part question. I think the applicant's representative addressed the one part, the other one was on kind of the compatibility, specifically getting at the lot size. And I would say it is staff's opinion that it is compatible, would note that this area is zoned RP Planned Residence District. And the original plan for this property in question was actually commercial. It was recently gone through a site plan amendment to change it from commercial to residential, the approved site plan was for up to two duplexes. And this is changing it from two duplexes to six single family homes. So although the lot size is a couple of thousand square feet lower than the average lot size within 250 feet. It's not a drastic difference and it is, the area is zoned RP Planned Residence District, which is designed to provide for greater flexibility. So we think, given the original intent of the lots to be developed as commercial and the small deviation in average lot size, in our opinion, it is compatible.
Do we have any other questions from the audience? Yes, in the back, please. Please, please come up to the microphone and give your name and address for the record.
My name's Sean Brolin, I've been there 19 years. At 2726 Heather Lane.
Okay.
Is proposed right in my backyard, basically. And just basically about every year, we have one to two events where the water backs up, it gets about three to four feet deep back there. Where they're proposed to build, it's probably three to four feet deep, it gets onto the edge of my yard, I've probably got a a buffer of maybe six inches in elevation of water before it starts getting into the back corner of my house. And I've got pictures from 2013 and 2014 of these areas. And this wasn't as bad as it gets, I've, we've had times where it was a lot worse than then. It's kind of a, the area's got a few problems, the problem is Prescott Creek runs westerly when it's heavy rains. Black Hawk Creek backs up to the east when it starts backing up and they converge. It sends water behind the houses that are right along my street gushing into the back of this area that they're talking about, it fills within a few hours. And it's a huge area. I've kind of hand drawn some kind of things that happened there, there's also the farmer's field up behind me is about 20, gotta be about 20 feet higher than our property, so that whole farmer's field, it's, I don't know if it's 80 or 100 acres or how big it is. That drains down the hill into that same area. They're proposing to put a lot of fill in there, a lot more fill than the drainage basin looks like to me. So my concern is that I've never had water in my basement. I pay a lot of taxes, I've been there a lot of years. And I don't have much of a buffer between the level of the water in my house. And I'm just worried that if we change things back there, because it's already got a, kind of a precarious situation going on. That it's going to change it for the worse for me and for my neighbors that are here. And it's not just that little area. But the water that comes into those areas affects all the houses up on, up on Edgebrook also. Those houses could be affected by this too because they're a little. Those houses could be affected by this, too, because they're a little closer to the water even than I am. So I've just got some pictures I'd like to give you and a couple of hand drawings that I can give you, kind of the effect of it. And that's my concern. I don't have concerns other than the water. There's a little concern with the highway being so close. Right now, we have trees buffering our houses back there. And if you knock all those trees down and you just have houses there, I think I'm going to get also a little more noise from the highway than I do right now. So, so main concern, though, is that my basement gets filled up with water, and I've got a big expense just because of the changes that, that are, we're proposing right now. That's it.
Thank you.
If you guys have any questions, those are from thirteen and fourteen, those pictures. But when I moved there in nineteen ninety-eight, and within the first year, I was going, whoa, what did I do? You know, because of the water coming, when it comes up. And about every year, it's, it's once or twice. Didn't see it that much this year, but in years past, it's been really high. And I'm sure it's four or five feet deep back there. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other?
My name is Lori Camire. I live at twenty-seven, twelve Heather Lane, right next door to Sean. I have the same concerns as he does. That water, that back area completely fills with water. And like he said, it is four to five feet deep back there. I'm the first house next to Charm. I have a black bright iron fence that goes all the way around my property. That goes all the way up to the top. That water will go all the way up to the top of that fence. So my concern is they fill that in. Once that water gets to a certain level, it goes out to that field where they want to build those houses. Once that, if they fill that in, that's going to cause that water to come up in my basement also, along with his and everybody else's around there. So it's not just down Edgebrook, but it's also Leslie Lane that goes the other way around, because that water goes all the way around there. And they fill that all in, it's just going to go higher into everybody's yards. So I have the same concerns.
Committee and staff, my name is Jake Whitmire. I live at forty-seven oh-five Twin Pines Drive, which is near the bottom of the map that you're currently looking at. As Sean explained, that area floods. It has a large flood, probably twice a year, but it actually fills up with water between four and five times a year. And when it fills up with a lot of water, that whole entire outlined orange area is kind of like a bowl. And that water spills down through the backside, past Heather Lane, Leslie, down to Edgebrook. It goes down the whole backside of the neighborhood. And it takes a couple of days for it to actually clear out. So my concern is you're taking a bowl and you're adding ten to fifteen feet of fill plus six cement foundations. You're essentially turning that bowl upside down. I have no idea where that water's going to go, but it's going to go to all the houses around it, I'm sure. So that's my concern. That the area works, but just, just barely right now. And I would have serious concerns to put six residents in there. It's what's going to happen with the area around it. The other thing is, the creek on the north side of this photo is already strained because they're currently building three, at least three residents back there right now. So I'm not sure what's going to happen to the water with the additions that are currently being made back there now. So you've got areas of concern to the north and the south of this area. And like I said, that whole entire, inside the orange area is like a, is like a bowl. And my concern would be what happens when you tip that bowl upside down and where is that water going to go? So, thank you.
My name is Vicki Reed. I live on Leslie Lane. And I just can't imagine if there were more houses and that bowl was filled, because our egress windows, we've seen it ten feet close to that. And I would hate to see my basement flooded as well. It would be awful. I've actually kayaked in those waters and went across Charm and into the back where he's talking, where the Prescott's Creek raises and is flooded all through there. It goes over Shawless Road. So I just, yeah, I can't see how, what they're even thinking to put houses there.
Can I ask some questions of the applicant?
Sure, we have a commissioner question of the applicant. Is the applicant present?
I'm looking at the, the site plan. And the question that I have is they're talking about filling it up, and we have this proposed detention basin. I see that we, it looks like we're going to have five-foot change in grade for the detention basin, and it's pretty significant slope. How much fill are we putting in? I guess, what is the original depth of this that we keep talking about it being a bowl? How much are you changing it where the houses are going?
At the front of the houses, well, actually, the, the fill beyond the street is, is going to get pretty close to where the front of the house. So at the back of the foundation, you're probably eight feet, something like that. I guess I would, I've got kind of a unique perspective, too. I live on the other side of Prescott's Creek, so I'm pretty familiar with that. I'm also familiar with the development across the creek, which is not going to get to the hundred-year flood. So that won't have any impact on that. I also, with gray hairs that I have, I was a young surveyor working for AECOM when that was all one flat cornfield out there. So everybody that's complaining here tonight, and understandably so, because it's a scary situation when the water gets that close. But this was a flat cornfield, and the Southland Park subdivision was designed to work in that environment. And that's why the DNR back in nineteen eighty-nine gave all these specific requirements for doing that. They require that you fill eighteen feet out from the foundation at the hundred-year flood elevation so that you don't end up with water right up against the foundation, that sort of thing. So this has all been taken into account a long time ago. Okay? So the, the reality is, the, the water that's coming is coming back from Prescott's Creek. There's, the restriction is at Highway sixty-three, and the water backs up. It backs all the way up into my pasture and stuff, too. So it's a valid concern, but from an engineering standpoint, and it's from the DNR, not me, this was designed to work this way. And filling in that, it, it would be no different if that, those lots had been filled first and then the residential, the other residential properties were developed. It was all part of the master plan. So, thank you.
This is Commissioner Wilber, and I'm just wondering, because I don't have extensive knowledge in, in development, but I do know that since, I think you had said the late, the late eighties, that things have kind of significantly changed. And so I'm one in terms of both our climate and land can change. So I'm wondering what kind of, I don't know, and maybe, maybe the city can address that, or the staff can address this. What kind of research needs to be done with more of a recent weather taken into consideration in terms of flooding? I know this isn't just unique to this specific development. There are other developments that have similar concerns, but I would just hate to only rely on, and perhaps there has been, but we just don't, we haven't been provided a more recent, I guess, research or data.
Sure. Okay, one other thing that's important to mention for this location. When, when the DNR authored that in nineteen eighty-nine, Fourth Street, basically, it curved, and there was a bridge in the middle of that curve, and then it became Shawless Road. In nineteen ninety-four, under city contract, they changed Fourth Street, made a T-intersection with Shawless Road, put in a new bridge, which was undersized specifically for the reason to hold floodwater back on the south side of Shawless Road. So the, the hydraulic impact after nineteen ninety-four is, is along Prescott's Creek is less than it was when the DNR gave their approval.
This is Schrader with staff. The only other thing I would add to that, although this area has elevations that are below the hundred-year flood level of the adjoining floodplain, this property is not in a regulated floodplain. It is not in the floodplain per the FEMA floodplain maps. So it, it was part of the original development plan for this area to be developed. They obviously took into consideration what was needed for drainage, leaving fifty-foot drainage easements to carry that floodwater. It's not in a floodplain now, so it meets all of the requirements.
Can I just say something, too? There's a lot of houses that got built up there off of Fourth Street, where that, that Fourth Street curves around. And there's a lot of drainage that's coming down into that area that wasn't coming, that was kind of getting seeped into the ground before, where now it's coming in a lot faster, coming down the, the hill from those houses. And they also said that it, that, that drainage area across Shalas gets overrun. I mean, it, the, the water comes over that bridge. So I think things have changed a lot in the last thirty years. So I've been there nineteen, and it, it's, it's pretty bad back there sometimes. So that's all I'm going to say, is that things are a lot different.
I guess I'll add a little bit to mine, too. My house has, I have a definite hill in my backyard, and at this point, it comes to the top of that hill. And if they fill that in, and we have just that easement to hold all that water, it's going to be in my house. There is no way that all the water that comes through there, that them filling it in and that detention pond or whatever it is, is not going to hold the water that comes from the creeks and from up, upstream, downstream. I mean, we just get flooded with water. So I just want to, if you, I don't have pictures of my house. Maybe Sean's got some in, in his. But I have a definite steep hill, and it's to the top of it. And I'm safe because that water goes out into that field where they want to fill in. That detention pond's not going to help me, because all that's going to do is take the rainwater from there, not from everything that's coming everywhere else. And then I have less for it to go out to. So it's a definite problem.
I'm Mike Beany, and I'm with the Slavic Officials Group. That's thirty-five, ten Kimball Avenue, Waterloo. Some would accuse me of being a salesman, because I am. But I want to speak two parts. One is, I'm hearing the residents' concerns. I'm also hearing that what's there now appears to be working, and that anything that's done in the future cannot or will not address the concerns that these people have. And I think when it's done engineering it, I mean, I'm not an engineer. That's why Mr. Beckman and his family hired Wendell here, is to engineer something that will not have a negative, negative effect on the surrounding landowners, property owners and homeowners. If I understand, and I'm a layperson at this kind of thing, there's a retention pond or basin, which is going to be used for the six properties so that water will not run off of that property without first hitting a basin, holding back water that would normally, the way it lays today, run straight into that waterway. I can't address that because I'm not an engineer, but that's my understanding from the meetings I've sat through. The second thing I want to address is, Mr. Beckman was here about a year and a half ago, trying to do the exact same thing that the, sharing the concerns he had with Quickstar, trying to move into a four-acre plot, which we refer to as the barn on Sergeant Road. And he, too, had concerns as to what the impact would be to the neighborhood. So Mr. Beckman is, is, he hears you, and he also wants to do what's right for that. Mr. Beckman put his money where his mouth was. When that was turned down, he bought that land so that he can have some say in what will happen to that land down the road. He brought the neighbors together to speak against that program. And I understand how the process works. Tonight, I think we're just looking for a replat from four to six units. My understanding was, we didn't even have to come here if we'd have just stuck at four. Had been a staff decision, we'd have to bring in our engineering and building plan, all that kind of thing. But that's down the road. Today, we're just here to replat from four to six units. The engineering, very, very important. It'll have to be done. It'll have to be done to the DNR and the City of Waterloo's specifications. We don't move forward until it isn't. And Mr. Beckman wouldn't want to do that if it wasn't done right. He's working in that area. He's trying to develop that area. He's going to do what's right. Thank you.
I don't think any of us know about four, the duplexes there. I mean, nobody ever told us. Made us aware of that. So we don't, we're not aware of any plan for any duplexes over there.
This is Schrader with staff. Please come to the mic if you're going to speak, but I'll answer the question on not hearing of the change to four. It went through the exact same process as this is going through now, which included notice to property owners within two-hundred-and-fifty feet, a meeting before the Planning and Zoning Commission with final approval by the city council. And just as a reminder, that was to change the approved site plan from commercial to, to duplexes. So it was previously approved back in the seventies or eighties, or whenever it was, as commercial lots. So it could have been developed as a commercial. So it's, it's a platted lot. It's going to be developed. It's, the development will have to meet all of the engineering requirements, but it is an approved lot to be developed. It was switched from commercial to do, to duplexes that went through the exact same process as this, and this is a request to change it from two duplexes to six single-family homes.
So are we talking about approval for these duplexes in the seventies or eighties?
This is Schrader with staff. No, it was recently. I don't, I don't have the date.
That I'm aware of, so.
It was.
Anytime recently. I haven't got any notice.
If Mr. Beckman remembers exactly when. I could certainly look it up in the index, but a year ago, approximately.
They're saying, we never got any, she didn't get one? So I've been there nineteen years, so.
I'm not sure on that. I, I know it did go through the process, and we did mail a notice.
Okay. At this time, we're going to finish with public comments, and so I'm going to ask for a motion from the commission to go ahead and close the hearing.
This is Castle, and I propose we close the hearing.
Okay. Moved by Castle to close the hearing. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. The second is from Buncheon. All, all, sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Chair votes aye. Anyone, anyone opposed? Okay, the meeting, the hearing is closed. Now we're going to move to discussion amongst commissioners.
Well, I guess I'll start. And I certainly hear what the developers have said and what they're trying to do and to keep water from getting in basements. And I also respect what our staff has said, you know? But I see some folks out here that are really concerned. They're not here for fun. And I know they're certainly concerned about this. And, and all I know, maybe I'm biased, but I've heard throughout the years. This is no disrespect to the owners that are already there, but I've owners that are already there, but I've always heard there's been water problems out there. If I was a betting man right now, I probably wouldn't move out there. And I hate to say that, because this is Waterloo, and no disrespect to where you live, but I doubt if I'd build or buy a house out there, okay? And before we started the day, I was already to approve this, but right now, my heart is saying, I don't know if I can approve this myself, okay? So, I'm just, that's just me, and maybe I'm biased. And again, there's no harm or hurt to the folks that work for us at Planning and Zoning, because they're great professionals. They know what they're talking about. But again, as a board member, I really can't vote for this.
And this is Buncheon, and I know some people who, well, they don't, they aren't there anymore because they got transferred, but, so they're no longer living there. But I do remember talking to them and knowing of their concerns as well. So, I'm aware, as Commissioner Tyson is, of the concerns. And, I mean, there's just so much engineering you can do, but listening, especially to you with the short hair, I don't know your name, I'm sorry, but listening to her concerns about how high it already is, and the fact that it could very well get into her home, we really don't want to cause that problem to somebody that's been there ten, fifteen, seventeen years, whatever. So, I have a very big concern about it also.
This is Castle. The problem we have, whether we approve this or don't approve, the problem we have is they can already build on it. So, no matter what, they can have water issues. I think as a group, we need to decide if, by simply allowing for two more lots, if that's really gonna cause more of a problem, because the four lots were approved, and so Mike, it's two duplexes, so four units, so same number of residential units. But the concern is, either way, there's, they have the opportunity to build. So, I just want to make sure that we remind everybody that we're looking at quantity of lots, not whether they're allowed to build or not. And I think that that's, there's a lot of concern out there, and I understand that you guys are concerned that there's water issues, and if they build, but they have already been given that permission to have those as the duplexes. So, I just wanna remind the commission that we're looking more about quantity of lots, rather than yes or no, can they build?
This is, this is Buncheon. I guess this is my concern, hearing from someone out there that they never got a notice about the duplexes. And I don't know if that's just more than one of you. So, you got, if you guys can let us know when that part got okayed, if you know, that's my question, I guess, to the staff.
Okay.
I'm assuming they're not gonna do any work on this till spring. Maybe the best thing to do is a table at this time to get that answered, and maybe get a better depiction of how drainage works through the area.
I can't make a move.
No.
What, just, this is Commissioner Wilber, just procedural question, but even if we go back and determine the date when the original duplexes were approved, what's the, what can this commission do to, if anything, basically, change that?
I'm just saying, since it's a question that's out there, I think one of the things that's being questioned out here, and one of the things that's changed from the eighties till now, is that stormwater detention is required in residential subdivisions, whereas back in the eighties, it really wasn't. It just went into the storm sewers. And so, there has been some changes for making improvements in residential areas. And I think one thing that might be helpful for this whole area is maybe to create some illustrations of where this plat is located versus where the rest of the lots out there are, maybe put in some topography, so you can see elevations of other existing homes, but also show how the drainage is coming from Shawless and forth through this area, and there is existing drainage easements. And as an example of where they're gonna put in their stormwater detention pond, how that is outside of the existing drainage area. So, it probably does slow water going into the existing area that's ponding. But again, I'm not an engineer either, so I'd rather have some professionals put together some more information that kind of show the whole bigger picture to you, so you can get a better idea of that before you vote.
This is Buncheon, and I feel, I feel that would be appropriate. And if there's some more engineering, or some more planning, or something that could take place to help ensure to our residents that they would not be having trouble with water, I'm sure they would, you know, they would be all for some more neighbors. But, so.
This is Commissioner Wilber. I guess specifically, I'd also be looking for, if there could be some topography of what I think Mr. Roman was talking about, where the two creeks, if they flood and kind of create the basin, how that then would affect or flow out.
I guess we need a motion, so.
Just gonna ask the applicant if he wanted to comment regarding timelines, and if the request is tabled a month.
I'm Glenn Beckman, and my family currently owns that land to develop. There's twenty acres out, twenty-four acres out there. This was approved. I'm not in the mechanics of the whole thing. We want to do it right, but we have a lot of fill to haul in there. The whole ditch is not gonna be filled up. It's just not gonna be filled up. Like, I'm thinking people think that, and I don't know, but people think it's gonna be level full. That's not gonna happen. There's still gonna be a drainage ditch there. And it will be manicured, whatever the city or the people tell us engineering that we have to do will be done. But I would like to get started on it as soon as possible. There's a lot of development in that area, and there's gonna be a lot of fill that we need. And it will be clean fill. It won't be cement or anything like that. Questions? I mean, I, just getting a little off the subject, we bought that other four acres with that barn, and everybody in this room knows what that barn looked like for forty years, don't we? Go look at it now. We just do things right, okay? Thank you.
I have one other thing to say. I would probably rather love to have it filled completely and level out my yard and extend that drainage out into that field where he's talking about where the barn is at. That would solve the problem. For me, I don't know what it's gonna do to everybody else, so I don't want to say I would want to do that, but that would solve the problem, because it's not the problem of the basin for the water. It's the problem of that easement and where that water runs. And until you see it, you don't have an idea of what it can do. And as far as, whenever they changed it for the two duplexes, the last I remember about that was they started to bring fill-in without having any, I don't know what you want to say. Yeah, no approval to start bringing that fill-in, and we had to have a stop order put on it, because they were starting to fill it without even getting proper documentation.
Do.
Hearing open again, because I'd like to speak again also.
We did not, no.
Okay. We did have a closed hearing, so the person previous got up before we got to make that clarification. So, do we have any final comment from the commission? Otherwise, we need a motion placed on the table to consider this item. Final comment, and then a motion of any type.
So, this is, did I get turned off? So, this is Buncheon. I move that we table this, at least, I'll say till the next meeting, so that some of the concerns that we've brought up, brought up can be addressed.
Okay. Do we have a, do we have a second for the motion from Commissioner Buncheon?
This is Commissioner Wilber. I'll second.
Do we have any discussion?
I was gonna say, it's Tyson. Will that give Planning and Zoning enough time to relook at this, or addressing the issues, or come forward?
I think so.
Okay.
Just a clarification on the motion, or what is your, what is the commissioner's timetable for when they wanted to?
One month, one month.
Okay. Those voting in favor to table the item?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Those voting against? Okay. Hearing none. This item is tabled until the December Planning and Zoning meeting. Moving on to the next item, we are going to move ahead in the agenda and consider the planning, the plans and studies items at the end of the agenda.
Just a note for Bob, before you were here, we did read the staff report on the herb renewal plans under Plans and Studies, all four of those. Essentially, there's two herb renewal plans. We're releasing vacant land and putting it back in, basically, to reset the timeline. Can I answer any questions that you have?
Having had, having read the, having read the staffing, staff report earlier, is there a motion to approve the plans and studies as amended, or as presented? Excuse me.
This is, this is Buncheon. This is for the plats? Is that correct?
This is for the plans and studies at the end of.
The tip amendments.
Oh, the tip, okay, I'm sorry.
That we already gave the staff report for.
That's right, okay.
This is Castle, and I move that we approve the four items for the plans and study to, I guess, reduce the area and enlarge the area for both the districts as reported by staff.
Okay. We have that motion from Commissioner Castle. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. A second from Commissioner Tyson. Is there any discussion? Those voting in favor to approve the plans and studies as presented?
Aye.
Aye.
And those, those voting against? Hearing none. The motions passed, and the plans and studies are accepted as presented. Okay. Where are we? Okay. The next item is Item B on the front page of the packet. Item B, the special permit requested by Americans for independent living, for a special permit for a Veterans Resource Center, transitional, with transitional housing within an R-three, multiple-family, multiple-family residence district, located at three-one-zero Upland Drive, on pages thirty-two to forty-four in your packet. And we'll go to staff report.
This is the West Room of Staff. The applicant has purchased a former nursing home and intends to remodel the property to enable them to provide services, services to veterans, which include emergency and transitional housing for veterans, mental health counseling, physical therapy, financial literacy, peer mentoring, and community resources. The existing structure has forty, two thousand two hundred and forty-five square feet, located on four-point-eight acres, and will have up to sixty-seven residence rooms. The first phase of the redevelopment would create sixteen efficiency apartments for single veterans, and one of the wings of the center, with some larger units that will be used for families. The length of stay will be six to twelve months. Staff will educate the veterans on finances, as well as help them obtain benefits that they may not be aware of. There will also be assistance for finding jobs. A part of the building will be used by Nobility Health, which they are trying to work out in agreement at this time. Staff does have questions in relation to the drug rehabilitation and mental health aspects of the center, and hopes to get more information on these matters. For example, how many and what will be the staff hours at the site? Also, how will the site be secured for safety purposes? The former nursing home and its activities appear to have been similar to the proposed use, and existing, existed without any negative impact to the surrounding neighborhood since nineteen sixty-six. At this time, you know, staff is in support of the request, however, we do want to discuss the operation of the mental health and the drug rehabilitation portions of this request. I know Mr. Tim Combs is present, that can answer questions.
Questions from the commissioner, from the commission? Okay. Any remarks from the applicant and explanation of the item?
This is Buncheon. If I can back up just for a second, I just have one question, and that's parking. Oh, I'm sorry.
Mark Johnson, twenty-three-nineteen Fairway Lane in Waterloo. First of all, I don't want you folks to think I'm up here gonna talk bad about what Tim Combs is doing for our veterans and our community. I applaud what he's doing for the veterans, and I'm very appreciative of what he's doing for our community. Some of the questions that we do have, and we just started to find out recently about the property that was Parkview Gardens, many of the neighbors had questions about what was going to be done. We know that there was a directive from Councilman Powers to Mr. Combs to start notifying the neighborhood, putting flyers in their doors, have an informational, informational meeting, and let everybody know what was going on with the property. We didn't get any flyers in our doors. We noticed a little sign in the front yard that there was gonna be an open house, and some of the neighbors went to the open house and had an opportunity to talk to him about what was gonna happen to the property in the future. We understand that he's gonna have, there's a five wings to Parkview Gardens. Of those five wings, only one of those wings is gonna be used for the veterans' programs. Other eighty percent of the building will probably be used for the mental health and drug rehab center. I personally, and I don't know how you people feel, if we've got a wing of that facility being used to house homeless veterans and their families, because we heard stories from the Americans for Independent Living people, and how they had a single mother, that they were trying to find housing for as quick as possible with their three children to get moved in there to Parkview Gardens and live. And how can we even think about having a young mother and three children living in a building to where we've got a forty-eight-bed drug and mental health rehab facility? That just doesn't even have the word "safety" in anything to do with those individuals. We also know from the folks from American for Independent Living, that they've accepted a hundred-thousand-dollar grant from the government. We know, as well as the people from Planning and Zoning, this moves this whole project to another scale. There's a lot of things that have to be done when you accept grant money. Also, we are aware, and have talked to the people from Care Initiative, as to why Parkview Gardens sat empty for four years. That facility wasn't good enough to be a nursing home facility. It was gonna be too expensive for them to remodel and bring it up to CARF and JCO standards, so that they could keep housing people there, so they built a new facility. It was simply more economical and better arrangement for them. The building sat empty. Who knows what's in there? We know that there's thousands and thousands of dollars of asbestos abatement that needs to be done. There's a lot of things that need to be done to that building that aren't coming out at this time. I don't know if Mr. Combs is not aware of it or not, but we wanted the commission to be aware of what we know is gonna be coming down the road with that property. If we just had veterans in that facility, that would be great. We would love that, and everybody in the neighborhood would embrace it. But now, we're talking about just very small percentage, twenty percent of the building for the veterans, sixteen units, a minimum of forty-eight, possibly fifty-two units, for impatient drug and alcohol. What are they gonna do for the safety of the neighborhood? What are they gonna do for all the neighbors? Is it gonna be a lock facility? Is it gonna be a fenced facility? What's, what's gonna be done? They've attempted to enter into an agreement with a mental health company out of California by the name of Saint Joe's. That fell through. Now, they're attempting to enter an agreement with a company out of Phoenix, Arizona. Now they're attempting to enter an agreement with a company out of Phoenix, Arizona. Nobody around here knows what's going on. The city of Waterloo doesn't know. I've called multiple times to council members, to Planning and Zoning, and we're scared. We're scared for the neighborhood. We're scared for the people that live around there, and me personally, I'm scared for the veterans that are gonna be housed there. We want those people to feel safe. And I think what's, what's tugging at me more than anything, if that facility wasn't good enough for a nursing home, why would we think it that would be good enough for veterans? Shouldn't they get a really good standard, just like the nursing home people would that would live there? We don't want this to be a cobbled operation. We don't want it to be done halfway. We need it to be quality for our veterans. And it, it's not gonna be quality for our veterans if eighty percent of that facility is psych and drug rehab. Thank you.
This is Commissioner Wilber. I have a clarification question. So, the Nobility Health Clinic, is that not going to be serving veterans, or is that for other members of, of the public?
Tim Combs with Americans for Independent Living. Um, no, in regards to that question, the group that I'm working with, uh, works basically strictly with veterans, um, in Arizona where they're located at. And, um, they have, uh, Senator John McCain is on their board. They have two or three, what I hear is two or three generals that are on their board also that, um, so they make their connections through the veteran field, through the VA offices and local states that they're working in. And, um, and through that, that's where they get the patients to come that need the services that they provide, so.
So it wouldn't be just general public unless they were...
Not, not at this time that we're, that we're talking about, because that's strictly what I wanna do, is help with the, the veteran population in the community and surrounding communities. So wherever we can get enough individuals to utilize that, the facility to do what we wanna do, that's, that's where they'd come from at the moment that we're discussing.
Thank you.
This is Butch, and I have a question for you then.
Sure.
In the information we were given, it says the first phase of the redevelopment would create sixteen efficiency apartments for single veterans and then some, um, some, some larger units for families. So are they correct when they say that eighty percent of it would be for mental health and rehab, or has that been decided?
No, that's, no, like forty-eight, like two wings or three wings would be what we were talking about possibly setting up for the, the medical side of it. So that's telemedicine. Um, Nobility Care is what's called the Behavioral Health Group. Um, so it's minimal. It's walk-in-the-door type individuals that need psychiatry, mental health counseling. So they could, they could come in the door or be sent there from the VA clinic or from wherever that may come from. And then, uh, for that phase of it, the drug or the drug and the alcohol type counseling is, they have to agree to want the help, and that is a short stay period. So that's, that's the rooms that they would utilize in, like, three wings. And then the, the fifth wing would be what we would wanna utilize as a resource center for veterans where we're trying to connect with the MVets and the Legions and the DAV and all the groups to be able to utilize, uh, several of those rooms in that wing for some, a few office spaces for them to be able to meet with veterans on site, for veterans to be able to come and hold the peer group meetings, um, a place where they can do some games, have a little TV room, uh, small library area where they can come read. They also have a, uh, we would have a, uh, computer lab area where they can, uh, do applications for jobs, looking for employment, looking for ways to get back to school, or any way to benefit themselves from this point forward, moving forward in, in life. So, uh, the talks with the behavioral health is still talking. Um, I haven't accepted anything. I haven't done anything that way. Um, a grant was mentioned. We didn't get the grant, so, um, I pulled the grant at the moment because, uh, we're not that far yet. Um, so I, so I pulled the hundred thousand dollar grant not, not to accept that at this time. So, um, it's still there, but we wanna detail some items, and I need to put some funding. I have to come up with half of that grant money to be able to accept it, so I don't have that half just yet, so. So that's where that's at on that phase of it.
So, and then the concerns that we, that we were mentioning about safety?
Safety, yes. With, with the, the group, um, the living facility, the sixteen wings is, would be secured along with the Veterans Resource side of it, would be totally separated from what's the center section of being the Nobility Care or which group I, we try to get in there to work with. So that would be separate. That would be twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. Nursing staff on, on hand, um, what they're telling me with it, I'm talking with, and, um, you know, it'd be security on hand, just light security, 'cause like I said, it's, it's walk-in individuals like you and I that just need help to get back on their feet, to get out of some light, light abuse situations that are going on. It's nothing that we're gonna be looking at, uh, major mental conditions or anything, you know, serious freaked-out drug issues or anything to that effect, 'cause I, I won't allow it. That's, that's not what I want. Anything to, anything to jeopardize the community, let alone the, the residents that we have or the individuals that we put in our short, short-term transitional housing. The, the family side of it, what we, we've thought about that and discussed and the other issues, and it'll be strictly as, an individual-type efficiency apartment, so for a single. I just don't have, they're not quite large enough yet, so we could really say that they'd be a family. So that we would look at at our regular housing that we have, uh, going on East Ninth Street, that we would end up putting anybody that had kids. We got a house we just, uh, acquiring right now that is gonna be the women's facility, so if there was a female that had some children, that would be a house that they would go into. So they'd have a regular living facility, not in a building like that.
And I just have one more then.
Sure.
Do you know of an asbestos problem in that building?
There was.
How, how old is that building?
That building was in the sixties.
Yeah.
Care Initiative, it was in, due to the boiler system, and Care Initiative's, uh, had all that removed before I got the building. And I, and they sent me the document on that.
So there's no asbestos?
Correct.
Okay.
They did a lot of, they did some updating, mitigating with that before I accepted it, and I, and I didn't know that at the time until after the deal was done. Uh, then they, they, they addressed that and said that this was taken care of, so you don't have to worry about it. Some of the water issues was taken care of. Some of the piping stuff was taken care of. The sprinkler system was all brought up to speed and functioning. And, uh, the only thing I had was heat to deal with, so, and a couple of rough leaks. So we're working right now on discussing functions of what we would need to do for just temporary heat for now to make it through the winter and the two, two offices that we have there at the moment, and, uh, then what it's gonna take to do the rest of the building. So that's all be addressed in plans through the architect.
Thank you.
This is Anderson. Hey, I, I think we're about to lose our quorum. And this is a little unorthodox, but I don't know if, the vacate of Bluff Street, uh, there's a map on page sixty-eight in your packets. There's no future or current city need for it. There's no utilities in there, so I don't know if you want to go ahead and approve that before we lose our quorum. There appears to be no reason for the city to keep it and let the business. Get it? I know he's here. If he, if we have any questions, probably, he probably doesn't wanna speak.
Okay.
Unless you want to, Kyle, but, um, I'm just thinking, we could take action on that before we lose the quorum. If you don't have any questions on it. Like I said, there was no questions at tech. Uh, we'll, we'll come back to that. So we'll come back to the current item if we can take a pause on that and then just go ahead and take action on the vacate. Sorry. Wanna ask for a motion?
Okay. We're gonna, we're gonna go, go ahead and ask for a mo-, uh, we're gonna go ahead and ask for a motion on the Bluff Street item. Is it Bluff Street? Okay, that item. Okay, so. Let's see, where it is.
Item D.
D1.
Item D under vacates. It's D1. This is the request by per, um, Personified Incorporated to vacate approximately twelve thousand, eight hundred and eighty square feet of Bluff Street. Uh, right-of-way located adjacent to three twenty, three two six, three twenty-six West Seventeenth Street. Uh, this item is on pages sixty-five to seventy-two in the packet. So, um, would anyone like to make a motion?
Um, I would like to move that we approve the vacate of, um, twelve thousand, eight hundred and eighty square feet of Bluff Street right-of-way located adjacent to three twenty-six West Seventeenth Street.
Okay, motion by Castle. Is there a second?
I would second it. As long as we have that condition, the legal, correct legal description, description be submitted before request is forwarded to City Council. That's all.
We'll add that to my motion.
Yeah, and then I will second that.
Okay, is there any discussion? Uh, those voting in favor to approve the item as presented with the, um, recommendations or with your recommendations?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Eric, don't you have to vote?
Chair doesn't vote.
But there's a quorum with five.
Chair will vote.
Chair, Chair, Chair does vote aye.
Thank you.
I apologize, but I do have to leave.
Okay. Um, and then those voting, those voting against, hearing none. The motion has passed for this item.
Hey, Jamie, just one second. I'm sorry. C1 and C2, the request for the preliminary and final plat. I don't think there was any questions at tech other than sidewalk. We could definitely get those answered before going to council. If you'd wanna approve that, unless you have any questions. It's really just kind of an infill area north of Love, south of Hawkeye Stages.
I was just gonna ask, um, is Mid-America's Energy concerned about the streetlights? Is that something that they'll...
We can definitely figure that out before we go to council.
Okay.
Okay. Motion. Is there anyone?
So motion for the preliminary and final plat.
So motion to approve, to, to consider the plans.
So moved.
Okay, so we have a motion from Butch, and we have a second from Tyson. Okay. Is there any discussion? Those voting in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Those, those voting against? The, uh, item is approved.
Then we can go back to...
For the plans.
I felt that there was more people that wanted to get up and talk about the other one. We wouldn't have time to get done with it anyway, so that was why I did that. Thank you all.
Is there anyone else that wants to talk about the Americans for Independent Living, the special permits item?
Hi, my name is Michael Lyons. I live at twenty-one, twenty-four Casper, and I too would like to take my hat off to him. What are you doing for veterans? I'm a veteran myself. I think the neighbors are totally in agreement with what we can do for veterans. It just seems like there seems to be a, now, we've heard from fifty-two percent to eighty percent that has, has gone unanswered on what's, what else could come in there. And we open up this can of worms, and sometimes, you know, you can't back out of it. We have no idea what these other programs are, um, are going to be put into there. I don't think Tim knows either at this time, and my hat's off to him for, for admitting that. We've looked up, uh, Nobility Health. I find a Nobility Healthcare out of Phoenix. It may be, the Nobility Care might be just a part of that. I don't know. But they seem to have a lot of, um, is my time off?
Don't be fine.
Okay. Uh, they have a lot of different, uh, venues that they, uh, they offer with that health service. I guess my only concern is, is that what else is gonna go in there? And we can't sit here and say about the safety aspects, 'cause we have no idea what, um, what, what they're gonna, uh, bring in to, uh, deal with the drug aspects of it, you know? So I guess we're looking at, um, at voting on something that's not really in place yet, and I would like to give Tim the opportunity to put together his package together before I would come in and say, "This is not a good deal." So, um, I just think that we, uh, are maybe the cart's ahead of the horse right now, and we need a little bit more time to see what else is gonna come into the program, and, um, hopefully it's something that we can take our hats off and say, "Wow, this is gonna be awesome." So, um, just something to think about.
I appreciate that thought and that concern, 'cause that's, that's basically where I'm at too with it. I don't wanna make sure that we have things detailed. And what I, what I would definitely like to introduce is that, uh, we had them open house for the neighborhood to come in, and when we get some more things detailed, is to have that again and have that same kind of, uh, informational-based meeting for everybody. And it was supposed to be in the paper, so I didn't know if it made it on the paper or not for that meeting that day that we had the open house, but, uh, we will do a better job at getting that put out, so people will be aware of it. But, uh, no, I agree with that side of it. So if there's any other questions?
So we don't have a quorum anymore, so we can't take any action on this, but we'd definitely like to take any more input of anyone that's here that we can share. Um, and we're, we're gonna have to bring it back next month. Um, and hopefully have a lot more information. We'll be talking with, with Mr. Combs to get more information and keeping everyone informed as best we can.
Do we have any more discussion from the commissioners?
Yeah, I certainly do, and just wanna say, uh, yeah, I used to live in that neighborhood at one time, when they had the nursing homes. It's a great place. Felt safe, you know? I always wondered, uh, what happened to it, and I thought, well, maybe in my later days of life, I might be there in that nursing home, but it's not there. But I can't help but think the need that we have for our veterans, without a doubt. They certainly need places. But also what's driving some of the violence in Waterloo, the mental health issues, substance abuse, we certainly need, need places for those individuals. But is it at the right place to have them both there? That's just my only concern. And for, for Tim, I don't know what you can do in the future. I would love to see, um, some kind of memo, recommendation, uh, from, say, a substance abuse provider that works with families, individuals, to say, "Hey, this would be a, a good fit for me to wanna say, yeah, this is something great." I know we need it, and I know space is hard to find in Waterloo. And, but again, would that be a good fit, uh, to have the veterans there, but also the, the mental health issues? And I can imagine folks say, "Well, God, this person, they just left, uh, what we're trying to establish here, and they're, they're going through my yard," or they're, they're looking at my kids. You know, I'm concerned. I mean, just those, those things you might hear from people, and I think we're all saying, "This is good," but just wanna see some more research maybe on this whole thing, 'cause I think we need something like this. But again, is it the right place? You know? That's my only concern.
I guess, this is Butch, and my, um, my concern is safety, but, um, we definitely need a lot more help for veterans than what they're getting at the present time. And I'm sure there's people on the street that are vets that we don't even know about at this point. So if this can be made to work and if it can be safe, and if you can give us some more ideas on the type of, um, services and how that's all gonna work out, and who else is gonna be in what pod or whatever you call it, um, I'm all for hearing more information.
I'm Keith Smith. I live at twenty-one, thirty Casper, next to my clients, and I bought, um, my wife and I moved into twenty-one, thirty Casper almost thirty years ago. Then we bought the lot behind us, which bumps up to Parkview Gardens. So Parkview Gardens nursing home is literally in our backyard. And it's, we watched it sit empty for four years, four and a half years. And, uh, when we heard, um, that Mr. Combs had bought it and what he wanted to do, we were thrilled. And I think, I, we'd love to see it turn in one hundred percent for homeless veterans. I think the whole neighborhood would be thrilled with that. But when you start talking about alcohol and drug rehab, um, I think everybody can, is concerned. Is that the neighborhood? Do you wanna put that in a residential neighborhood because of safety? You know, we heard twenty, twenty percent for homeless veterans, then twenty percent for walk-in offices and services, but we're still talking sixty percent for alcohol-drug rehab. And is there gonna really be the safety there? I know Mr. Combs says he doesn't want violent and people that have to be locked down, but if someplace in Phoenix is running it, will he have the say as to who goes in there and who doesn't go in there? I, I'm sure he isn't gonna be able to, you know, to, uh, oversee as to what patients are in and what patients are out. And I think that's what's concerning the neighborhood, is safety with alcohol and drug rehab patients in a residential, uh, area. And also, when he said, uh, Parkview Gardens cleaned out the asbestos, I hope they did, but I know what it takes to do that. I've seen it. And I, and since it's in my backyard, I never saw anybody there with... And since it's in my backyard, I never saw anybody there with suits on and cleaned up. And it's a major operation. And when I sit in my sunroom and literally look out at the nursing home, I never saw that. So I'd question on whether that's been done. I'd like to see the paperwork on whether that's been done. Because I can't believe it has, and maybe it has had. I'm not calling him a liar. But I've seen what it takes to do that. And when we sit in a sunroom and you look out across the yard to the Parkview, that didn't happen, that we saw. Thank you.
Any questions? So you're on the back of that. So is there fencing there of some kind right now?
No.
Okay.
No, we bought the lot. On the right-hand side of the square there, right where the hand is, I built that, I bought that lot, built a three-stall garage, and then I have access through Fairway Lane on that private street. And that's a private street. When I bought it, Parkview Gardens agreed, and they had maintained an access to that street. When Care Initiative went to sell it, they said, we will no longer take care of that, and we won't help you with plowing, with upkeep. So this year, I bought some cold patch. I fixed my street myself. So, and I know that intersection is real bad. Somebody fixed it. I don't know whether CNS Rental fixed it, or if the city come out and fixed some of that. But technically, Mr. Combs said, well, he wasn't going to use that driveway anymore. But yet, it's used every day, and it's not, and I know they aren't helping with it, but that's just, that's not the major part. Our major concern is safety with the alcohol-drug rehab. Any other questions?
Okay. Are there any more questions from the commission or from the audience? Because if there is no more questions, we can adjourn. Okay, do we have a motion from the commission to adjourn the meeting?
We can't officially adjourn, can we? We're going to be open till next month.
Meeting is adjourned. Thanks for coming today. Thank you.
Great job, Eric.